Hi there, Lauren DiGennaro, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Doug Flaherty, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Gina Burksok, Superintendent.
Holly Derlo Babcock, Co-Op School Board Member Chair and from Hollis.
Kate Stoll, Co-Op Board Member Vice Chair from Brookline.
Patrick West, Principal of the Middle School.
Jacob Hest, Principal of High School.
Ashley Disco, Student Body President.
Thank you, thanks everyone. Okay, so, moving forward, just for the board's information, Rob Mann is running late. He is going to be here. Beth Williams is not going to be here. And we do have a board member, Amy, who's going to step out at a certain time and hopes to come back unless we adjourn beforehand, so. So I do need, are there any agenda adjustments?
Did you want to add Spec Committee to the agenda? Did I hear that correctly?
Did somebody say that?
Okay.
No.
No.
No, actually, let me put it on the agenda because I do need to remind the board that that's coming up. So Spec Committee is going to be underneath discussion as our seventh item. Is that okay with everyone? Is there anybody opposed to that?
I didn't hear what it was about.
Spec Committee, just, we're just going to talk about...
Process.
The process.
Here?
Well, here, because it's going to be coming to you.
Well, the only reason I say that is it's a discussion item on tomorrow night's agenda.
Okay, so we don't need it on tonight's agenda?
It's up to you.
I'm going to say it really quickly, so that if somebody in the public is listening, they'll hear that, hear and hear.
Okay, because I don't know what, that's what we're hoping to get from Carol.
Carol sent an email to me today, so that's why I want to update you. Okay. Okay, is there anything else?
No.
No, okay, great. How about notifications of nominations, resignations, and correspondence?
Yes. Dear Superintendent Gina Burksok and Co-Op School Board Members, I'm writing to let you know that I plan to retire at the end of this school year. It has been a true privilege working with our students, being part of such a supportive community, and sharing my days with such wonderful, a wonderful group of coworkers. I'm deeply grateful for the experiences, friendships, and memories I've made here, and I will do everything I can to help wrap up the year successfully. Sincerely, Maria St. Pierre, Health Teacher at the Middle School.
Oh, wow, okay. Thank you so much. I think we'll take a motion to accept the letter, right? Motion to accept the letter of intent to retire received from Maria St. Pierre with an effective date of June 30th, 2026.
So moved.
Moved by Kate.
Second.
Second by Amy. Okay. Any comments? We want to thank her for all her years of service, obviously, and, you know, her time with all of our students, because she's met every single student, right, as our health teacher?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Five zero, motion carries.
Okay. Dear Patrick Ali and the Hollis Brookline Co-op School Board, please accept this letter as my formal notification of my intent to retire at the conclusion of the 2526 school year. I have truly enjoyed the past 16 years working at Hollis Brookline Middle School. It has been a pleasure to collaborate with some of the most talented educators in the state, and an honor to teach more than 1,000 young men and women from the Hollis and Brookline communities. As I reflect on my career, I recognize that this is the right time to step away from full-time teaching and pursue new interests, particularly travel and opportunities to continue working with children and young adults through outdoor activities and sports. Thank you for the opportunity to make a difference in the community I am proud to call home. Sincerely, Carol Swanson.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the letter of intent to retire received from Carol Swanson with an effective date of June 30th, 2026.
So moved.
Moved by Kate. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cindy, I'm going to say this time, just to... Are there any comments? Again, we want to thank Ms. Swanson for her years of service and all of her time with our students, and I'll take a vote. All those in favor, five zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Any other notifications or correspondence, anything else?
I have a piece of correspondence. I just wanted to notify the board and the community that we did receive a petition warrant article on December 8th, similar to last year, establishment of a charter commission for the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District for the 2026 school district meeting. Each of the undersigned voters requests the municipal officers to submit to the voters at the next municipal election the question of establishment of a charter commission to draft a municipal charter.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. All right, at this point, I'm going to appoint a process observer. Is there anyone here willing to serve? I need someone who's going to be here. Tom, thank you. All right, and then we'll move on to approval of some minutes. So we have our November 12th, I don't know if this is close enough to me, I don't know if you can hear me. We need to approve the minutes from the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board Meeting of November 12th. We had some amendments, page 8, line 39, correct the spelling of "up-trip." Page 9, line 10, insert "impressed," follow "being." Page 13, line 35, insert "are," following "there," and page 17, line 33, "need" should be plural. I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Kate. I need a second.
Second.
Who said that? I had to take my glasses off, so I can't see. I'll have new glasses next month, you'll see. Okay.
They're all progressives.
I know, but they don't work for me. I can't do those. Okay, so, is there any comments or discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Five zero, motion carries. We also had some non-public minutes. I need a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Kate. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Amy. All right. Any comments?
Where were they?
I think they were with the other ones.
They were attached to the other ones.
Just, I don't think there was much in there. All those in favor? Four eyes, nose? Okay, four one, motion carries. Okay, moving on. We're going to do public input, as long as it's, all right, we're going to start public input at 6:07, but we are scheduled to do a 30-minute public input starting at 6:10. We'll start it a little early, but we will run it for 33 minutes, so that we get the 30 minutes in, and anybody who wants to come in has until 30 minutes from 6:10, so that would be...
6:40.
6:40, thank you. All right, so, so our public input portion of the evening, we ask that residents provide input, that you, if you are coming to provide input, you state your name and address for the record, and that input be focused on items included in the agenda. The public input period is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion, but rather an opportunity for the board to hear from residents before acting on agenda items, so we generally don't respond to public input, and we ask that members of the public keep their comments to three minutes. Okay, so I'm going to open the floor for public input at 6:08. I know I have some public here, so you're welcome to join us at the mic.
So I have some input for you. I'm going to hand some of these things out to you, sir. Thank you. Much of the information in here is joint with Brookline and Hollis, but parts of it are very relevant because they deal with the Co-op High School, and that's what I'm going to focus on, for what I'm handing you here.
Thank you.
We have a problem. Everybody just got their tax bills, and they all went up by 11% to 12%. The bulk of which...
Okay, you can't, you can't speak until you're at the microphone, because people in the listening audience won't be able to hear you.
I see. I mean, I brought one too, well, that's an issue. I brought one too few.
Then I can share.
Unfortunately, it is. So there you go. All right, so I'll reiterate, so what I handed out there contains some...
Please state your name, name and address for the record.
Aaron Pincasek. You know, I'm at 133 Dow Road.
Thank you.
In Hollis. Contains two things. One is a recent article that was published on November 30th that speaks to all of New Hampshire with respect to the public education system. And there's a couple of key pieces of it that I want to draw your attention to. On the second page of it, and I'm just going to quote right from the article, it says, between 2002 and 2023, the number of public school staff increased by 15.1%, and this is statewide now, while student enrollment grew by only 4.1%. The bulk of the new K through 12 hires were non-teachers, which increased by 22.8%, such as counselors, social workers, speech pathologists, and instructional aides. In comparison, the number of teachers rose by 7.6% during this time. Those are the educators, the ones that provide the value to our students in terms of moving them forward in their life. Non-teaching staff now account for 52.5% of all public school employees. And you can read the rest of that article at your leisure. I'll flip over now to the charts that I provided to you. There's four pages there, and on the first page, one of the statements that's made shows that we are now spending in the Hollis Brookline Co-op School District $30,314 per student. That's insane. At the same time, if you look at the Hollis Brookline Co-op School District on page two, the spending increase since last year went up 4.1% with 4.8 fewer students. It's all there, you can digest it at your leisure. The total Co-op spending per student went up 9.3% in one year. That's the number of the $30,314 that I just gave you. If you flip to the third page, this is the one that's scary. You look at the chart at the top of that page, and you see the blue bars is the enrollment in the student population, and the curve going way, way up to the right is the budget. Okay, so the enrollment is going down significantly, the budget continues to go up significantly. We've got a problem, right? The fourth page, if you look at the two charts that are there, it shows the level, the number of students that are not proficient at grade level. And for 2025, for science, grades eight, 59%. Grade 11, 44%. These are not proficient. Okay, reading, 39 and 13 for those same two grades. Math, 51 and 44. We are paying for a product that you're not delivering.
Thank you for your input.
That's a problem.
Is there anyone else who's going to speak?
Any comments?
We don't comment, we just take it. Thank you.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think you would.
How are you all doing? If you know me, my name's Doug Davidson. I live at 85 Wright Out Road in Hollis. I'm a former public high school teacher in Washingtonville, New York. I'm the former ranking member of the Co-op Budget Committee. I started my community service here in Hollis as a member of the Conservation Commission, Hollis Cal Ripken Baseball, the Board of Directors, fundraising, and a couple of other things. But I'm here tonight representing a new group called AGL, at grade level, at grade level. So I'm not here to say that for dental paid visits a year, which is contrary to what the American Dental Association asks for. I'm not here to talk about the insane budget growth, some of which you just got a review from, from Mr. Pincasek. I'm not here to argue that people who are on the board of the Budget Committee shouldn't be negotiating contracts with the unions, which I was very active in when a teacher that gets, that person gets the benefit of. I'm not here to talk about any of that. I want to know what we're going to do to get all our students in the 90th percentile to be reading, and doing math, and doing science at grade level. So you probably all heard it, NAAP, the National Assessment of Education Program that we have to report to as a Co-op and as the SAU into the state. So if you go to the New Hampshire Department of Education, the assessment data, desegregated data, you can look at my Facebook page for the specific instructions. Hopefully, some of you have had the inclination to look at this information. This is the summary of our juniors, which clearly is a key grade level pending going into college, all right? Now, this is the data that the SAU compiled, the professional educators compiled, and provided to the Department of Education, okay? This is as of August. 36% cannot do math at grade level of our juniors. 27% cannot read at grade level. And 52% cannot do science at grade level, okay? Now, if, I don't know if any of you ever worked at Herman Manufacturing, but there's a concept of five nines, 99.999% quality. We are so far from that, it's just abysmal. And this is shameful, and whether by an epiphany, whether by self-reflection, or whether by shaming to you, all right, this has to stop. And we are, AGL is going to come here every month and be vigorously active in the community, and we're going to ask you, what are you doing to fix those numbers? Because if you were on the, in the public, private sector and working in manufacturing or any kind of quality process management program, you'd all be fired. You'd all be fired, okay? So you need to do this, and you need to get on it. And it's, it's not about the money, because I've been participating in the budgetary process in this town for probably the last 20 years. And we've approved virtually every budget that's come before, that's come before the town, all right? That's come before the Co-op. And this is what we got to show for it.
Thank you. That was three minutes, thank you.
We'll be back.
Okay, is there anyone else? No, okay. Okay, so public input's open until 6:40, yes. Tom.
I understand our policies and our practice.
Right.
Based on the public information that's just been presented, I would like to comment. Do you want me to do it at the podium, or do it here?
Maybe you should do it at the podium, just to be clean and simple, because we generally don't go back and forth, and I don't want to break precedent.
No, no.
Tom Solon, Shady Rock Road in Brookline. I'm prompted by the, some of the presentation that was made tonight by other members of the public. I'm speaking to you as a member of the public, but as a board member, I have awareness of, and watched some of the topics that are brought up, brought up perhaps from a different perspective. In particular, the discussion about the assessments of our students is a real concern, both in terms of the numbers that are presented to us and to the public, but also in the method in which those, those are created. And going through as part of the assessment evaluations, part of the budgeting process, and overall, especially looking after last year's annual meeting, digging into it with the help of our superintendent, it's become clear that we are being heavily penalized by two factors. One is the fact that the state has a grading method that is deceptive. And second is that being a high-performing school, we have students that choose, because they have the option to, to not take the standardized tests. As a small school, what I learned is that if we don't get, I think it's 95% participation, every, every non-participant below that 95% is scored as a zero.
Not true.
As a zero, and in doing so...
Please let him speak.
We calculate, we, in some of the tests, we've had almost, well, less than two-thirds participation. So if you were to average the scores, the raw scores, based on the actual number of people that took the tests, and not use the apportioning method that's used by the state, the scores would be different. I would like to see some methodology, either from the school or from the public...
30 seconds, Tom.
...to lobby and conquer, to use an assessment method that either changes the opt-out option or changes the grading method. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Point of order, Chairman.
You can come up and speak again, Doug, if you need to.
Okay, yeah, okay. If you go to the, I'm sorry.
Make sure you come to this mic, please, and...
Doug Davidson again.
Settle down.
Okay, well, I've been studying this for 20 years, and that's just hogwash, okay? So if you go to the website and you go to the columns, okay, you've got to go down to the 32nd thousandth line, okay, is where the HB Co-op Junior numbers are, 11th grade numbers, okay? It has, well, there's a column that has the percentile of every, every examination, okay? All right, now, this is the excuse, this is the cop-out we've been hearing for years. If you took statistics and probability in college and got an A in it, like I did, okay, then you know that if you've got a percentile of testing that's 90%, you have a valid sampling. It's very valid, that's an understatement, okay? So these are the numbers, and this is why AGL, we just want to know, the professionals of the state and this district compiled this information, a test as a former educator, a test is defined as a measure of learning. That's what it is educationally speaking, all right? So professionals created these tests, administered these tests, compiled the results, and presented them to professional educators for the Department of Education. So that's hogwash, Tom, okay? If you want to create a separate test...
Can we try to maintain respectful language, please?
Oh, well, it is respectful, okay? We're not getting the product, folks, okay? We're not getting it. So we need to, we need to take a step back and open our ears and look at the numbers. Look at the numbers, okay? The sampling is greater than 90%, so therefore, it's completely valid from an analytical standpoint, all right? So that's hogwash, all right? You've got to look at the numbers, and one of the other things that I've never seen this body do in all the years I've been coming or participating as a member of the Budget Committee, as well, is nobody's looking at improving the curriculum. Nobody's looking at best practices outside the district. Nobody's trying to get those scores to the 90th percentile, which would, the only, the only grade that would be acceptable in the private sector. So stop living a myth. You're living a myth here, Tom, thank you.
Point of order, also.
You don't need to do point of order. If you want to come back to the table, you can, you can come back up to the mic, and we'll give you three more minutes.
So if you go look at the New Hampshire law regarding to the evaluation, they describe in detail their, the statistical method that they use based on the 95% of the participants required by law, and by the way, if we're not at 95%, we're breaking that law. And they use, they use those numbers to create a score for the people that did not participate. It's not a zero, it's, it's an average. Go look at it, it's on the website, I just looked at it last night, right? And so make sure you know what you're talking about when you're here discussing these items, because it's not zeros. And also, that doesn't even make common sense to include a zero score for someone who doesn't participate, right?
Yes, it definitely doesn't make sense, no. And there was a presentation on test scores by the Superintendent of Schools, Assistant Superintendent last year, I believe it was in, in this past year, in April. There was a full presentation, so you guys might want to take, take a look at that, the presentation is available online. If you look at our April 2025 agenda, you'll see the presentation of that. And keep in mind that we do live in a parent opt-out state, so parents can, kids can opt-out. Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. Again, public input closes in about 15, 20 minutes. All right, so athletics. We're going to move on to our principal report, and we'll start with the athletic report.
Starting at the high school, our winter sports are currently up and riding, running with this past week, our regular season starting. Bowling started things off on Saturday with their annual kickoff classic, and swimming opened up at the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Nashua on Sunday. The rest of our winter teams are in the swing, scheduled competitions throughout this week, and with strong participation numbers, we're looking forward to an exciting and successful winter season for all of our sports teams.
Thank you, Jake. And they do look like those are good, healthy participation numbers, so, thank you. Are there any comments on the athletic report? Good luck to all those kids who are playing, doing winter sports. That's quite a commitment.
I'll jump in for the middle school.
Oh, did I, did I, I'm sorry, I'm a little frust.
Do you know if Crouchett is back on a schedule that works for us, for skiing?
No.
No idea. Well, they shortened their work week...
A few years ago, yeah.
...that they were open, and as a result, it ended up impacting the ability for some of the ski teams to practice because they weren't open five, five days a week. I was just curious if they're still in that reduced environment. I can, I can look it up.
I think that's where they've still been practicing, though, right? I think that's where they're still at.
Well, the first year they did it, they canceled the night that was traditionally our practice, so I don't know how, how well they were able to adapt to that change. And with there being, being fewer nights available, then it became a challenge, so some of them had to switch to a different area to run their practices.
My understanding is our team is going to Crouchett to practice.
Okay, Patrick?
Middle school athletics, following high school model, we started tryouts in November, first week of November, basketball, wrestling, and we've had a couple games. Our, both, both of our girls and boys basketball teams have had a couple of wins already, and our wrestling team begins their season with a match today up at HBHS. Best of luck to that team, and again, the winter sports season is off smoothly, and I'm excited to see how our winter sports teams do this winter.
Great. Good luck to the middle school athletes as well. I do want to kind of break off for a second. We realized that we did not include a deliberative item for the program of studies, so if you don't mind adding that to our agenda as number one, actually, to do that first, under deliberation.
It wasn't in the packet either, though.
It's not. Well, we saw it last, last month, so it was in the packet.
Were they going to make some changes?
Jacob?
Yeah, we had just had to update the numbers in the charts.
Yeah, there was, the only change was the, the number where the social studies was not three and a half credits, but four credits, or three credits or four?
Was the only thing that was being updated?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So we'd have to look back to last month's agenda if you want to look at it.
Is it updated in this, I don't know if you want to wait, but is it updated in the same?
That was the only error we had. Obviously, there was the change sheet and that sort of thing.
Well, we'll talk about it during deliberations and see if we can actually deliberate on it, but I'd need, I need it on the agenda so that we, because we really do need to move that forward, so, okay.
Where are you putting it?
As number one, so we can talk about it right away. So everything else has to change, sorry, guys. All right. Moving on, Hollis Brookline Middle School Principal's Report.
Sure. No school in November flew by. It was a fun month. We had our turkey trot at the end of the month, and we had a great participation by our student and staff. Over 95% of our student body participated again this year. We did change the course a little bit to have runners go a different direction of walkers, because middle schoolers, students and staff are very competitive, so we just needed to change our course a little bit. But we had top finishers from both grades who were awarded shirts, and the top finishers also received turkeys this year, and then second and third place also got some additional prizes on top of their shirts. And congratulations to our new 7th grade social studies teacher, Ms. Serret, for having her rock finish, her rock completely finished the race first, so they got a little prize as well. And then Mr. Goldstein, who continues to crush the competition, he runs the Boston Marathon every year, so he won again, and in good fashion with his turkey trot suit. We've been finishing each month with all-school community meetings, and this month, sorry, November, we finished again, but one of our teachers, Mrs. Clemmons, has been battling cancer for a few years and was recently diagnosed, or sorry, the battle has gotten worse for her, so we, Dr. Hall and a few other teachers put together a T-shirt, white T-shirts for Ms. Clemmons, which a bunch of students and staff have purchased, and we dedicated that all-school community meeting to Mrs. Clemmons, added some pictures there of all the excitement, and it's just been a nice way to kind of end each month with our community meetings, but also dedicating this past one to Ms. Clemmons and the battle she's fighting. Wanted to give our 8th grade art projects a quick little shout-out. These are down the staircase to the left. These pictures really don't do these artists justice, but there are some projects that they've been wrapping up, creating tints and shade portraits, learn how to mix their own colors, with some learning on how to make their own skin tones using just the primary colors. And just want to give Ms. Ardrake a big shout-out. Her passion comes through in her students' artwork, and again, if you get a chance tonight to just take a look, there's pictures there, but they're really incredible arts, art projects, and really impressive, and just want to thank those students and Ms. Ardrake. We were invited up to the high school last week for a preview of the outsiders that Mr. Barbosa put on with his... that Mr. Barbosa put on with his students. It was a great experience for our students to not only go and see a live-action play, production. It was just a preview, but it was a nice curriculum connection for our students because all of our seventh graders do read The Outsiders. So our eighth graders read the book last year and got to see a preview of that show. And our seventh graders will read The Outsiders in the spring and got a little taste of, of the play and able to make some connections when they do read the novel in the spring. So thank you, Mr. Barbosa, Mr. Hess, for that invitation and opportunity. It was, it was really nice, and it was awesome to see some of our old students that have come through HBMS in, in the light that they really get to shine in. We had our spelling bee finals last Friday. All students had an opportunity to participate, but we had our final round last Friday. I have not got the winners' names yet, but the top finisher will have the opportunity to participate in February at the state level. Our student council continues to do some really nice supportive community involvement with the Helping Hands Gift Drive. In our main office, we have a number of mittens still available where families, students can go to get different items to donate to families during the holidays. And continuing on with that support for Mrs. Clemmons, our counselors and some teachers put together a basket ravel, which those are all the pictures of all the baskets that were put together by all the different rock groups. So rock groups took on a different type of basket, asked for donations from families, and teachers put together a lot of these baskets as well. And we raised close to eighteen hundred dollars that was donated to a lung cancer research on behalf of Mrs. Clemmons. So it was a really nice effort, and thank you again to the community, parents, families, for all their donations and support as we supported Mrs. Clemmons over the last month and continue to do so. Some upcoming dates, we did have our band and chorus concerts last night. I just wanted to highlight that we have a hundred and twenty-five students in chorus this year, and sixty students in band, which is a huge increase. So a hundred and eighty-five total students involved in band or chorus, which is about half of our student body, which is really impressive. So big shout out to Ms. Nol, Ms. Costa for getting those programs really where they're at. And it was a great show by students and by our teachers. And I have opened questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Patrick?
Oh, and I did include my, sorry, HBMS clubs and advisors. We do have a new club this year, Spanish Club, which was started in big part because some high school students reached out to our Spanish teachers. So high school students are coming down and participating in that Spanish club, and it's not just for world language students. Anybody's welcome. But it's been a nice addition to our already many club offerings.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
It just really feels like you're building such a great community in that, in the school. It's, it's so clear from all of the work that you do, and it's especially clear given the circumstances of Ms. Clemmons and the fact that, you know, your staff and students in the community are gathering around her. So that's wonderful.
Yes.
Any other comments? Tom?
Is math counts not running because of participation numbers or because of not having an advisor?
Yes.
Both.
Both. We don't have an advisor, but there has not been students that have come forward asking to have math counts.
Is it typically something that students initiate? Or has it in the past been something that exists and teachers encourage the students to? So I'm just wondering-
We did have an advisor that stepped back. We haven't had an advisor to step in yet.
Should we be making a concerted effort to get one to rekindle it?
I've been trying, but I don't know if that's a-
Have you gone outside the school to try and get one?
No.
Might be something worth considering.
Board members are able to be advisors as well?
I think qualified.
I'm not.
I'm wondering, are high, are high school teachers available?
A high school teacher was the advisor previously.
And Ellen, I'm just, between the, or among the various six schools that we've got in the SAU, I'm, I'm wondering if we could get someone or-
Yeah, I mean, the two-
I just, I just think that that program has, in the past, been extremely successful and beneficial and fits in well with the population that we have.
And so has National, National History Day, too. I mean, both of those are, are-
So is that, is that the same situation with that club as well?
Correct. We haven't found an advisor to fill that one.
Yeah.
I think, I think that one would be even harder to find an advisor for the, for math, because there's so many disciplines of which math is a core competency.
Well, I mean, I think it's good that you brought it up, because hopefully, maybe someone out there will hear. But yeah, those are two, I mean, I did notice that as well. Both, both of those are sort of more of our academic clubs. I'm sure we'd love to see them be pursued in whatever way we can get them.
For sure.
Great. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to the high school principal's report. Oh, I did want to say, I have been, I did receive, I have started to receive things through Parent Square. Has all the board been able to do that? Okay, great.
I got a, a note to sign up for, which I didn't address because I wasn't sure what comes through that.
So that would be, that's how you're gonna get their newsletters?
I've been getting the newsletter. I started getting the newsletter, but I didn't sign up.
Okay, well, I wasn't getting the newsletter, so you're getting it.
No, I just-
Right.
At the same time, so I didn't know if it, was there an automatic signup for school board members? Do you know?
So that was a, a bit of a struggle. We had added you as a group, but you weren't receiving them. So then we thought, well, let's try to invite you directly. And that wasn't necessarily working for everyone, so I'm glad that you didn't have to sign up and that you're receiving them. But we're still trying to figure out what, what's going on.
I don't know, see, I didn't know if I was getting what the signup would get me or if I was, if there's anything-
Yeah, so I wasn't getting anything. So now I'm getting the, the reports, the newsletters.
The paid subscription gets even more. You have a Patreon account?
So moving on, thank you. Sorry for that tangent. Jake, December board report.
On December fourth, our AP Government students traveled to St. Anson's College for the first round of the We the People competition. Three groups tackled two units each, which was double the workload from them from the past years. And out of the six units, the teams came home with two best unit awards. So the next stop for them is the state finals on January ninth. It was pretty cool the day before. We got to kind of drill them with some practice in the library. The snow day threw us off a little bit, but it was nice to work with them in the library to get them ready for that competition. So that was a really good time. Also, on Thursday, December fourth, as Patrick said, we had the middle school come up to the high school. All four hundred-plus middle school, seventh and eighth graders came up for our showing, our preview and Q and A with The Outsiders. It was really nice to work with Patrick and the team down there and Mr. Barbosa to put that together, so it was really nice to have them there. And then on Friday and Saturday night this past week, we had our fall production of The Outsiders. It was a wonderful production that displayed the talents onstage and behind of over sixty-five HBHS students. The production was also an awesome learning experience put together by Director Matt Barbosa. Students worked along with a licensed stage combat specialist, J.T. Turner, and the original pony boy himself, actor musician C. Thomas Howell, throughout their learning process. There's a show preview during cap block on Thursday. The middle schoolers came. Special shout outs to costume director Liz Cole, tech advisor, Mr. Ben Michon, and their amazing work for all the actors, tech crew, stage managers, costume workers, everyone else. It looked great. It sounded great. They did a really nice job with that show, so we're happy with that.
Great.
Some upcoming, oh, and then also, Monday and Tuesday this past week, we're already rolling into the musical. We had auditions for Rock of Ages that will take place in March, so, you know, hitting the ground running right with that as well. Important dates this week, we have Guitar Night on Friday night. It's the nineties and two thousand songs. The following week, on the sixteenth, we have our winter concert. And then we're gearing up for winter break at the end of December.
Great.
I have also included our clubs, advisors, and the enrollments, our current enrollment numbers for our CTE programs.
Okay, so first, any comments on the board report? We'll probably talk about the advisors and the CTE numbers in a minute, but I just have to comment, did they meet C. Thomas Howell?
He did a Zoom-
They Zoomed with C. Thomas Howell, and you didn't call me? Like, seriously? I have a huge crush on him. Like, are you kidding me? Like, that's our, that's, I'm old.
We recorded like a nice, like, preview video when the show started. It was like, stiggle.
Oh, my gosh. Stiggle, pony boy?
I will let Mr. Barbosa know he dropped the ball.
I know, you've got to let him know, man. I would have, like, wanted to be on that soon. So, okay, no other, but the rest, congratulations all of them.
I can send you the video.
I should have gone to the play. Congratulations.
Because I got his back porch, it was windy.
Yeah, it is windy. It was windy. Congratulations to them, and it sounds like it was a successful production. Okay, so any other questions on the board report? Sorry about that. Again, I keep derailing the meeting with my comments. Okay, any comments on, or questions about the club advisors? The list of club advisors. We have similar questions, I think, probably, Tom, right? Well, I have two questions, so I'm gonna ask them. So have we had debate in the past, like, three, three or four years? When was the last time we had a debate team?
I don't remember.
Oh, no, we had an amazing debate team.
So I feel like, okay, so when I was there, yeah, when I was still at the high school, we had a debate team at least through the year, at least through twenty twenty-two. I think after twenty twenty-two, we may have had an advisor for twenty twenty-three, maybe, but I don't think we've had one since.
Yeah, okay. That's a really, that would be a nice hole to fill at some point. We really, honestly, going back, 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 as I said, I was old. We had some students who really cranked a debate back in, like, the two thousand ten era, you know, a long time ago, so.
And we do have a musical director. Her paperwork's not finalized yet, so I didn't list her name here.
Okay, okay. Do we hire from outside the?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right. All right. Any other questions on that? Okay, and then moving on to the CTE numbers. Are there any questions on those? They're healthy numbers. No? Okay, thank you. So no other questions for Jake? Great. Moving on to student council, student body president, right? Ashley, thank you.
So the National Honor Society finalized their chapter project for this year, so we're gonna be working with national parks in the spring. The Red Cross Club made holiday cards last Thursday for veterans, and then students have been working to proofread these so they can be sent out soon. Impact Club hosted a book drive last week and also this week, and then students have been helping out with that as well. And then the senior class has been planning on putting on a winter formal in January and haven't had a dance in January before, so that'd be a new event that would be fun. And then the math team had a meet today, but they've also been crushing all their meets this season, winning the last two.
That's great. Thank you very much. Thanks for all the-
Dominating is what?
Dominating. The math team's been dominating. That's great to know.
The mathletes are dominating.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Okay. Any questions for Ashley? All right. Moving on to our discuss, the discussion part of the evening.
We've hit eight forty. I mean, six forty.
We've hit six forty? Okay, thank you. So public input is now closed. Thank you for that. All right, so number one on our discussion item is a review of our suicide prevention plan. I assume that would be Lauren, and hi, Lauren. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. So the purpose of this presentation is to provide, provide an overview of our Suicide and Harm Prevention and Response Plan, which is included in your packet. So you'll see the actual plan in your packet and the forms that the staff uses that go, go along with it. This is also posted on our district web, website for all three districts. So we review this plan with the school boards for approval at a minimum every two years. We do internally review this process more frequently than that just for our own kind of upkeep for best practice and such. The framework of our suicide prevention and response plan comes from RSA one ninety-three J, which went into effect in July twenty twenty. However, even without this RSA, students' social, emotional needs and well-being are always at the forefront of our work. In order to create this plan, we use the four elements that practices, that our practices need to address per the RSA, which include annual training, education for students, crisis prevention resources, and partnerships with community organizations. Educating staff begins at the start of each new academic year when the school counselors and administration review the building's safety protocol with staff. That is also included in Appendix A of your packet. The staff learns how to follow the protocol and under what conditions the protocol needs to be followed. In alignment with RSA one ninety-three J, staff are trained annually through the vector K through twelve edition, youth suicide awareness, prevention, and postvention, which meets the requirement of this RSA. We all must be cognizant of potential warning signs. Therefore, the safety protocol chart is included within every classroom for teachers for easily referenced in the moment use. When students feel connected to adults at school, they're more likely to speak up when they're struggling. Those relationships help us notice changes in behavior and respond early before things escalate. Talking openly about suicide and encouraging students to connect with trusted adults is a critical first step in prevention. This work is not limited to school counselors or administrators. Every staff member plays a role. By creating a school climate that is inclusive and welcoming of all identities and backgrounds, we help students feel safe, valued, and supported. School counselors intentionally build relationships with students every year, not just when there's an issue. At the high school level, school counselors stay with the same grade-level caseload for all four years, which allows for trust and familiarity to grow over time, starting with freshman meet and greets and continuing through regular intentional touchpoints throughout the year. School counselors also stay visible and accessible through classroom presentations and daily interactions. In middle school, school counselors are assigned grade-level caseloads as well, which helps strengthen the connections with both students and families. Their consistent presence during lunches, check-ins, and small group meetings make support feel approachable and routine. Counselors and administrators also proactively support student well-being through presentations on bullying and mindfulness in freshman wellness courses and in all seventh and eighth grade health classes. In addition, wellness and mental health posters are placed in bathrooms, which has a, a monthly theme and resources and different tools for students that are daily reminders of available supports, and they promote a growth mindset. Both schools utilize our MTSS process, which stands for Multi-Tierred System of Supports. At the high school level, they meet regularly as a student intervention team three times a month to identify students who may be struggling. These meetings allow the staff to share information early and provide a coordinated wraparound approach to support. In middle school, bi-weekly MTSS meetings serve a similar purpose with school counselors also attending weekly common planning time meetings with teachers to identify concerns early and intervene before challenges escalate. In addition, the school counseling department works alongside our school resource officer, and they promote substance abuse prevention through school-wide activities and awareness initiatives. So these next two slides are just a snapshot of some, you know, pieces within the school communities that really target that community building and connection. So for the middle school, this slide gives an overview of how we support students socially and emotionally across the school. Bi-weekly social-emotional learning team meetings occur, made up of administrators, counselors, and teachers. This team meets regularly to look at student needs, coordinate supports, and make sure that their work is aligned throughout the building. School counselors also provide direct support to students through individual and group meetings. This could include lunch groups as needed, skill-based groups, school-wide assemblies, and involvement in larger events like the community meetings that Patrick referenced earlier. There's also a calming room in the school counseling office, which gives students a space and tools to help with emotional regulation and resetting when needed. Rock is a valuable part of the middle school community to ensure that every student has a strong relationship with at least one staff member. Students meet daily, and the program includes themed monthly curriculum focused on relationship building and social-emotional skills. There's a heavy focus on community meetings and team building at the whole school level, the grade level and team level. So you have the night games, which run over weeks during the school year. They're designed to build relationships. You have Spirit Week, Red Ribbon Week, the Turkey Trot, which we heard about in Patrick's report, and they all reinforce positive culture and student engagement. Students are encouraged to get involved in clubs and activities, and most clubs are open to all students. This helps students connect with peers who share similar interests and strengthens their sense of belonging. There is a lot of emphasis placed on supporting transitions, especially for incoming seventh graders and new students. This includes step-up days, two summer open house opportunities for students and parents, and a seventh-grade orientation the day before school starts to help students feel prepared and connected from day one. Overall, these efforts work together to support student well-being, strengthen the relationships, and build that positive school culture. This slide focuses on the additional supports that are placed to promote wellness at the high school. Advisory was created in an effort to support and build students' connections in the building with one another and also with a trusted adult. Studies have shown that students who are well-connected socially to one another as well as a trusted adult in the building have better academic and social-emotional outcomes. Also offered are weekly lunch groups, where students can share concerns in a supportive setting. Students also have access to individual and group meetings, and we intentionally include self-care supports for staff as well, recognizing that adult wellness plays an important role in supporting our students. In addition, other staff lead social skills groups as appropriate, providing targeted support for students who benefit from more structure. There are school-wide opportunities that bring our community together around awareness- There are school-wide opportunities that bring our community together around awareness and connection, including Challenge Day and Walk for Change, both of which focus on building empathy, strengthening relationships, and increasing mental health awareness. Supporting new students as they transition into the building is a priority. We offer a freshman and new student orientation to help students feel welcomed, informed, and connected before the school year begins. A new initiative is Cav Cares, which Cavs Cares, which is created in an effort to recognize students and staff caught being good, good humans, being kind, and who personify HB's five core values, which are integrity, intellectual curiosity, innovation, individuality, and involvement. At the high school level, there are a wide variety of clubs as well, including groups like Community Wellness Ambassadors, Culture Club, and HB the Change. These clubs are made up of both students and staff who are committed to promoting wellness through connection, community, leadership, and advocacy. In addition, we make sure that families have access to community resources. Later on in the presentation, you'll see where those are available on our website. These advisory supports and initiatives help create a school environment where students feel connected to each other. So getting into the kind of crux of the plan and what this looks like for a multi-tiered system of support, you may have seen this before. So with the framework like this in place, we can identify where our prevention measures align within each level of the MTSS periods, pyramid. So we have tier one prevention, a lot of what I have described, you'll see in the tier one and tier two levels of support. And then tier three are more targeted supports that may need more intervention and may fall into our processes like Section 504 and special education. So these are just some snapshots of our website, so if you go to our website, I did, I took screenshots of the high school, but it's the same for the middle school. So you will see under Resources, there will be a link to the counseling office, next slide, where you will then find Hollis Brookline Mental Health and Community Resources, click on that. And then you will see that community resources are easily accessible to students and families through the website. These include mental health, wellness, and support services available both locally within the community. When needed, we also have resource sheets, and you see a snapshot in your packet and our forums of what that resource sheet will look like that can be given directly to families to ensure they're aware of supports and how they can access them. This goes into our safety protocol. Should a student express an intent to harm themselves or others, the safety protocol is followed. This slide provides an overview of the process, which is outlined in greater detail in the packet. It is important that the person reporting the intent does so in real time. For example, if a comment is stated in class, the teacher is instructed to call down to a school counselor and/or an administrator immediately. They do not email, they do not wait till the end of the day, they are trained to contact someone right away. A student is never left alone from the moment there is any intent or concern expressed. The school counselor and administrator will meet with the student to hear what the student is feeling, hear what's going on, and what prompted those comments or that writing, whatever it may have occurred. Parents are called, they come in and meet with the school counselor and administrator, where it is explained that they will need to see a mental health practitioner before returning to school. Resources that are included in the packet are provided, as well as phone numbers. If the student works with a private therapist, they can also speak to that individual. Once the student is cleared as safe, there's a reentry meeting that is held. This allows the student, family, school counselor, and administrator to work together, along with any input from a mental health provider as appropriate, to create a clear, supportive safety plan moving forward. This is a chart that explains some options as far as seeking an outside practitioner. With concerns, there are off-site and onsite options available, the global crisis response team, which is also through Greater National Mental Health. They can go to the home, they can come to the school environment, there's different options available. The reentry meeting begins the post-vention process. The school counselor, administrator, and parents and students meet to discuss the practitioner's recommendations and input from the team to discuss any needs that the student may have returning to school. A release of information may be signed for the school counselor to speak with any outside providers in order to bridge the support from home to school. Regular check-ins with the school counselor are often part of the reentry plan, but there are many options available to make sure the student is comfortable and safe in the school environment. Depending on the severity of need, a referral may be made to the Section 504 team or special education, or if a student already has a plan in place, that team may convene to discuss potential necessary changes to the plan. This process is an important one. It's important that we review it regularly to make sure that we are supporting our students and families. As we move forward, we continue to evolve and strengthen our prevention opportunities at the tier one and tier two level, as well as education for our students. I'm happy to take any questions on the presentation or on the packet and the plan that we provided.
Does anybody have any questions?
Is this, is this program, do you have enough resources and funding for this program as it stands?
For the plan as it, as we follow it? Yes, I mean, you know, because again, we're, we're providing different kind of professional development opportunities. The different, we work, we partner with community organizations, you know, which is often at no cost. It just depends on what, what we're doing in a given year, but a lot of the work that we've been doing has been fully supported.
Anything else, Rob?
So far.
Tom?
Thank you. How much of this program is dictated by law versus things that we, as a school district, believe is important, whether required or not?
So I think that we do a good job expanding on what's required by RSA when we look at the annual training, and then we look at all of the different initiatives to provide that connection in that community. I think that, you know, we've interpreted it, you know, the, the four basic areas of RSA, we follow, they're there. I think this district does go above and beyond, and rightfully so, you know, to support the students and be able to forge that connection. And we, and we continue to build on our professional development for our school counselors and social worker, you know, because again, this is at the forefront of what we do, so I, I don't know exactly how to answer.
Staffing standpoint, and do we have, are we staffed to provide services or resources that are beyond what's required of us as a school district?
I think we are appropriately staffed to support our students.
Tom, move closer to the, she doesn't always hear you. Dawn has a hard time hearing you sometimes, so.
So for example, we have certain non-staff positions that are non-traditional teaching staff positions. We heard the comment from, from the public that in many school districts, there is a, a growing proportion of staffing that is not directly in the classroom. Trying to understand, I have seen within our district that we have grown, and I know a lot of it has been to allow us to service our students in school, in district, with considerable cost savings, as well as dramatic benefit to the outcome. But I'm also wondering how much of that is dictated, is nondiscretionary? Even if we didn't want to undertake that effort, has the, has the, have the requirements placed on the district by DOE or federal or whomever dictated that we increase our staffing to meet those requirements? And we're just doing the best we can within that framework? Or are we identifying positions where we are staffing up because we think it's the right thing for our students without being prompted to address a legislative need?
So I think the answer to your question is both. I mean, because we have certain regulations that are not necessarily only tied to this, but we have special education, and we have certain needs where we have to have staffing and certain services by law and by nature of these processes that I'm mentioning here under Section 504 and special education. Beyond that, when we look at student services as a whole, which includes all tier levels, tier one, two, and three, whether you, you know, have a specialized plan or not, I think that we do what is best for our students, and we make sure that we are supporting all of our students. And that's where this type of plan comes in, and I think that that's where that staffing is utilized in an appropriate way, and we use it across all student services with the staffing that we currently have in those service provider positions. I hope that answered your question. I'm not, I'm not quite sure it did.
It doesn't completely, but I think it's, as much as I can ask you to.
I think I'm just gonna make a comment, and I think I'm gonna kind of follow up with kind of what Tom is saying. So my understanding is that RSA 193-J is a 2020 law, right? So prior to that, was there another law that required that we have a suicide prevention plan? Do we know that?
I would have to look back at that, I'm looking at Gina to see if she recalls one.
Like, is this, was this an updated law or a new law?
We did have a law, it was a new law.
We had a plan, but it was a law that we had to have it and had to, with a policy, and we had to bring it to board every two years.
Right, and so I think it's important for those members of the public to understand that when something like this is presented to us, a law that we have to, you know, follow, but also our good conscience, I mean, we unfortunately have lost students to suicide in this district. I don't think there's a district in the state who hasn't, but especially in a co-op. So we're doing our due diligence to take care of our kids, but we're also following the law. And I think what Tom's trying to get at is, where's the distinction? How many people have we brought in to help with different things? And I think those are good questions, but I do think that we're getting comments from the public earlier about how we have so many non-teaching staff members, but yet we have a, a real responsibility to keep our kids safe. And part of keeping them safe is keeping them, making sure that they're mentally, you know, that their, their mental health needs are being met, not necessarily in person, in therapy, in school, but in the fact that we need to be able to know that we have professionals who can assess where they are. So I think we're kind of trying to figure all that out, and we have some members of the public who would like to see us not have as many of those kinds of staff members on, but we also have to make sure that we take care of our kids.
Correct, and I understand that, and I, and I agree, and that's why I was bringing up, like, there's, there's a myriad of reasons why we have service providers that are not direct instruction teachers, right? But it does encompass all of this. And just like I had said in the very beginning of the presentation, you know, yes, this is an RSA, but our district has always kept student well-being at the forefront of everything that we do, and that student support need at the, you know, the forefront, so I do agree, I understand what you're saying.
And I would encourage members of the public to go back, was it October you did it or November, Lauren? In October, to go back and look at the presentation of the special ed services that are being provided. Because when we bring in, as Tom made this point, when we bring in sometimes a special ed provider and keep our kids in the district with that provider, we actually have a cost and, you know, benefit to that. But it's still an expense, and so it's hard to, to, to solve that out. So anyway, but anyway, thank you very much, Lauren, any other questions, comments?
Clarify for you a little bit. One of my impressions over the last 20 years, the availability of services to our community as a whole at the state and local level has diminished.
Absolutely.
And responsibilities have fallen on the school districts. Some of it through just good practice, but much of it through legislative action because the community is seeing the impact, and the legislators are saying, well, we've got the kids in school, and that's where a lot of these things are manifesting. The schools must therefore address it. Over that 20-year period, the number of new positions that have been created in district where previously the impression given was that those services were available through external community organizations or at the state level, has increased as those resources have diminished. But I don't have the broad-based viewpoint to confirm that, that's just my gut feel. So what I'm trying to understand is, is, is that a, an accurate viewpoint? Or is that, am I distorted, distorted simply because I've been focused on it at the school board? And I'm, that, I'm not asking you to.
That's a challenging question. Yes, no, and I, and I understand what you're saying, I think, a little bit better now, and and I think over the 20 years, it's been complicated, there's been a lot of kind of changes as far as how students learn and what, and the legislative pieces and what schools are, are and are not responsible for, and what is happening in the school. So I think there's a lot to that question, and it's hard to say specifically.
Yeah, it's a super complicated question. Thank you, Lauren.
Well said.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, thanks so much. Do we have to approve the plan? It's already been approved, so do we have to have a deliberative item to approve it? Or this was just, you have to present it to us, right? We just have to hear about it every two years, and it's on our December, great, thank you.
I was thinking about in two years, maintaining the school year and doing it in May, two years, two school years from now.
Okay.
Just think it's a better time of the year.
That's fine, yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's not really a great December topic.
Yeah, I was just thinking of this morning.
Okay, so the budget, we don't have a, was the budget not added in?
No.
No, it was not, I did not.
Okay, so sit tight, and I'll do that. Oh, shoot, I only was given a hard copy.
No, but the, the link isn't there for us to be able to see.
Okay. Well, guess what, we're under guidance, so we're good.
So, it wasn't there, it wasn't, when I printed it, no, when I printed it this afternoon, it wasn't there.
Correct, because this is hot off the press, we've been working all day on it. And really being quite, okay, now this is too small. Okay, and, and we also have updated, just for your reference, I added the program studies, so it's available both there, and I shared it with you in your email.
Okay.
But anyway, let's, let's talk about the budget. So we'll go through the new items. For round three. So I have, I have cut the library visit for the middle school. As I, I'm just waiting for a thorough description of what author we're going to bring in, and then we can look at funding that, and potentially that's a good PTSA-supported activity. Moving on, I can't remember if I mentioned this in this meeting, but those items, the professional development for teachers and admin, new higher orientation and building coaches, those are items traditionally funded by Title II. I'm concerned it's not gonna be around next year, however, we fund like forward, so we have a grant to fund FY '27. So you'll likely see this in FY '28, but I can cut it from, from this budget. All right, looking at the high school, although I am keeping the precal textbooks, the actual cost is a little bit lower. So we decrease that and keeping expendable supplies. But once again, I've cut the PD for teacher and admin, new higher orientation, building coaches, because we have a funding source. All right, the next item, I want to explain, because I think this was unclear at last night's Hollis Budget Committee. So in all of our individual negotiation rounds, there's been some level of interest in vision benefits. We don't offer vision benefits, and most employers offer that now. But with one individual group, we don't have the number of participants to move forward with it. So what we did this year was we piloted a, a year of vision benefits where it's fully funded by the employee. And if we have enough employees who want to pay the full premium, then potentially we can, we can move forward. So let's say the premium is $100 a year, if the employee pays for it. If the district is willing to contribute 50%, then the total premium drops to, let's say, $60, the teacher pays 30, the district pays 30. So it's a significant savings if there's that minimum contribution. So there's a placeholder of $1,500, which more than covers the district's portion if we choose to contribute 50%. So that's there, and we can get feedback. The database manager is still there. It's decreased to $40,000 because we did have a stipend for the same purpose already in the budget, so it's really just an increase of 40. Moving on to new computer equipment, I have cut the smart board with stand for the middle school PE. Sorry, Patrick. Um, and then moving on, everything else pretty much stays. And replacement at computer equipment is just critical that we maintain our four-year replacement cycle. Otherwise, we're just gonna be faced with double next year. Another really critical component here is our access points have reached end of life at the high school, which means that we can't get parts and we can't upgrade and we can no longer update the system. So, we need to replace those at the high school or our method of instruction would be changed dramatically. I have cut from round two still, um, the access control, um, just the FOB, the upgraded FOB system at the middle school. I also cut the radios, phase three for the middle school, also for the high school. And that's an upgraded radio system that allows the administrators to communicate with all seven buildings, which is certainly important, but we're gonna delay that. I also have cut the FOB locks on the weight room doors at the high school. Moving on. I've cut flooring for classrooms at the middle school. I have cut paving behind the middle school. I'm gonna go to the blue items in a moment. At the high school, I've cut flooring, phase two. I have cut the back student parking lot and the front parking lot. Those are paving jobs, quite costly. I have cut the Taj Mahal, multi-use building, facilities, turf, snack shack. I have cut the tennis courts. However, I do want to make everyone aware that the costs for tennis court rentals is, because in order to have a tennis team, we have to have tennis players.
You have to have courts.
You have to have a court. And so, we're paying rental fees and every year, they're unpredictably much higher than the prior year. So, um, it is certainly becoming quite expensive. So, I just want that on everyone's radar, but, um.
Before you jump away, away from that, one of the things that was talked about at the facilities committee meeting was that there is supposedly discussion within Hollis of adding tennis courts. And one of the things that if, if we're going, if we're going to rent, if we, if we could rent and pay to pay ourselves, essentially, the taxpayers could pay themselves, we should collaborate with them and plan it so that, number one, the school will get guaranteed use of it. And number two, it could lower the cost to the taxpayers for an investment that the town is looking to make.
Sounds like a good topic for the.
Capital?
Capital, whatever.
CEAC?
The CEAC. The CAC. Yeah, thank you, Tom. Yeah.
And we're, and we're talking in the $20,000 or so for tennis court rental.
But, but if you factor that over the, the number of years.
Right.
And how it's being paid, it adds up.
Certainly.
And maybe an opportunity there for sure.
Right. Okay. Um, snowplow, um, we, I've cut that.
You've cut, oh, cut buying our own snowplow.
Buying our own snowplow, yeah.
I was gonna say, we need snowplowing.
Right. All right. So, I've cut the auditorium lighting fixture updates, upgrades, fixture replacements and house lights. And, um, I think I mentioned this last time, I've cut phase three of the elevator retrofit because we're utilizing existing money and we've, we really had to fast check that to make sure the elevator was ready in time. So, I don't have to add that to the FY27 budget. The blue items are items that I have shifted to the maintenance trust. So, those include ductwork cleaning, phase two and three, for a sum of $20,000 in the middle school. It is, um, far more cost-effective to complete that ductwork cleaning when they're already in the ceiling doing all the HVAC work. So, I, I think it's critical to fund that now so we can do it simultaneously as they're continuing the work on the HVAC this summer and next summer. I also have moved roof section three of the middle school to the maintenance trust for 150,000. Once again, we're moving forward with the solar. So, I want to make sure as much of the roof is ready to go as possible. And while we're up on the roof doing the work, completing that at the same time, I've also moved track resurfacing into the maintenance trust for 130,000. As I mentioned before, our track currently is not, um, we cannot host a track meet. Two of the lanes are not runnable. And so, we, um, this should have been in the budget last year, but it was omitted inadvertently. And so, we really need to move forward on that. So, those are the, um, those are the new items. And my change is, before I go on to warrant articles, um, do they have any questions about what I cut or did not cut?
Any questions for Gina? Questions? You good?
Okay. So, looking at possible warrant articles, we have year two of our HESA agreement. So, that's 131,512. Um, the SAU assessment, so the co-op portion is 1,231,790. The thought was to put forward a contingency at 100,000, again, as we typically do, the maintenance trust at 300,000 and then, um, no, no contribution to the special ed trust as we've hit that cap that we said we would hit and maintain at. So, that's that. If you go through the spreadsheet, line by line, Lance did a great job of color coding them so you could easily see where there's increases and decreases. I want to preface this by saying that the work this year has been, um, a learning experience. What was, what I knew about our process was not necessarily what was taking place. And so, Lance, and then with a little bit of my help, um, and with a lot of people chiming in here and there, um, and Lauren going line by line, we, we had to go cell by cell and determine what had been in each line in prior years. We had paraprofessioners, paraprofessionals in, let's say, 10 different budget lines when really, they, they need to be in a middle school and a high school line. And so, we've moved and we've tried to clean things up to make sense. In prior years, um, personnel was budgeted in chunks of money rather than, you know, John Doe 1.0 is 76,377. So, it was unclear as to who was in each line and if we were properly funding them. So, we have cleaned up a significant, um, number of lines and tried to make sense of it. Some lines were special ed, but were not visible to Lauren. And so, the money was, was sitting there and really not visible to other people. So, it, we just did a lot of cleanup. We also are trying to understand exactly what is expected of the presentation. And so, if there's something you'd like to see last night at the Hollis Budget Committee, we learned that they would prefer to have headings within each section, which we can do absolutely to help you with regular ed, special ed and, but any other suggestions, just let us know and we can, uh, make the appropriate updates to those. But anyway, as I mentioned, we did a lot of sifting through and moving and cleaning up. And so, you'll see some, you know, thing, oh, account lines that dropped to zero and then another account line that goes up significantly. That's because maybe we moved a person, um, from one line to another. But if you go to the very end, um, you can see that guidance was set at 32,93,820. The current budget, operating budget right now is 31,784,767. So, we are 309,000 and change below guidance currently. So, I'm hopeful that that is satisfactory to, um, to the community. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, Gina, just in case there's people listening, guidance is the number that the budget committee sets.
Correct.
For us.
Mm-hmm.
For, for you and your team to come under. So, you've come, what? Sorry. So, you've come under that number by $300,000.
Correct.
Are you going to be doing a round four or do you feel like you're done at this point?
I would love to be, to be done with at least one budget. No, I mean, I think I'm, I, I, I feel good about this. There's not a lot of extra. I understand that, um, I understand that we're all sort of hurting by our tax bills. We have a lot of asks. Certainly, Hollis taxpayers are looking at an expansion at the primary. So, I'm happy to come significantly below guidance, um, knowing that there are asks elsewhere. But if I don't have any further requests to cut more, I, I'd like to move forward as is.
Tom, did you have a question? No. Great. Rob?
Can a lot of these changes be rolled into the CIP plan? I'd like to update the CEAC. We've got other, uh, changes.
Yes. Yep. So, um, that is on my desk and I just finished all the Hollis updates and co-op is next. I know you have a meeting tomorrow morning. Um, but I, um, will do that as soon as possible.
Yeah, as soon as I can get it, I'll just pass it on. We're, we're supposed to, um, give our first preliminary, um, view to the select board on next Monday. So.
I can have it to you tomorrow. I just don't know that I can have it to you before your meeting.
Okay. That's all right. We'll work with it. Gina?
Yeah.
How familiar is the chair of the budget committee with the current budget?
Not very familiar at all.
Okay.
I believe it just was sent to her the same time it was posted. I have a me, a, a tentative meeting set up with her either Friday or Monday to go over it.
Okay. I was just wondering what the process is for aligning in preparation for the next budget committee meeting, which is next week.
Which is next Wednesday. Yes. She invited me to that meeting. Due to the holiday, it was moved. That is the same date as the Brookline Board Meeting, which is joint with the Finance. And, um, I will be tardy as I'm picking up Sophie from the airport. So, I can't attend. But, uh, my hope was to collaborate with her ahead of time so she could get my historical input and thoughts on where we are now.
Comfortable with, with, uh, Lance being in the hot seat for that meeting? Is he, is he real familiar with?
He's probably more familiar than he wants to be with, with every line.
Concerned as the puts and takes because I know that they're very familiar with the past spreadsheet. From what you're describing, I, I doubt that they are as familiar with the challenges that you, um, experienced and the steps that you've taken to reconfigure it. When you do meet, if you could focus a lot on the, the process as much as on the, even more than the numbers, I think that would be real helpful with what I anticipate will be the discussion that takes place in the, in the budget committee meeting.
Sure. And like I said, I was at the budget committee last night for Hollis. So, the co-op chair is at that meeting, asked a lot of questions and, um, you know, I responded with the process. And so, my hope is that in our meeting in a couple of days, that'll just be reiterated and, um, you know, hopefully shared with.
So, I assume it was the same, the Hollis budget have the same issues that you had to go through that as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I do want to make a note for Dawn that Amy stepped away at 7:20. Okay. Is there any other comments? I mean, congratulations. I, the team has done a Herculean amount of work and that's always, I'm always so impressed with how, how much work it is for everyone. At the end of the day though, my main question always is, if you were to move forward with this without going to round four, do you feel like the needs of our students are, will be met by this budget?
Absolutely. If you, if you notice, I didn't really touch academics too much. I didn't really touch most of our, you know, replacement computer parts. So, I really just tried to focus on, um, what can I cut where we can easily move forward another year?
And then, I, a lot of the cuts were in facilities. Obviously, there's some dream facility projects, but do you feel like you'll be able to maintain our facilities and, you know, this budget keeps us in good stead?
Yeah. So, I cut flooring, but I didn't cut the floor machine. So, we can clean those old floors.
I just, um, I could wait and talk about it in, in the budget committee thing, but I think it's more appropriate to have the discussion here. And some of the things that were cut, like the snowplow and, uh, facility and things, those are all part of a, a master vision.
Okay.
That I think needs to get some focus because it, what I learned is it's not just for the co-op. It's for, the co-op is a convenient place to have it. Gets the overall discussion, much like what we do in special education, what resources do we want to own? Which is what resources do we want to contract?
I think those are good questions.
And, um, I don't know, might look to the superintendent on this, but should this discussion be taking place at the, uh, district levels where it is district budgets? Or does it take place at the governing board level because it involves all districts? I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
So, you mean like going over the capital improvement plans? Is that, could you?
No, I'm talking about the discussion of, do we want?
Do you want to own the snowplow?
How do we want to address facility needs? And, and without going on too much of a rabbit hole, one of the questions is, should school districts try to partner with their geographically local, um, town resources for things like snowplowing and maintenance? Because right now, if they do, they treat them as a contractor. In Brookline, it's really complicated. And one of the reasons for these items having been in there is to address Brookline needs. But it could benefit the co-op as well. And because the co-op services both Brookline and Hollis, it was viewed as perhaps an appropriate home for, but it's, it's just a complicated discussion. I just don't know where that discussion can take place. And what happens is it doesn't take place and we keep kicking this can down the road.
So, I'll make a note that we can talk about where we could put that on an agenda in the future for here or you can do the same thing as.
Dig it up at the, at the board chairs meeting as well.
Right. That would be something.
We're just preparing.
And then the other thing is, although I don't want to put this on the agenda in any time very soon, I do think we talk a lot about a capital improvement plan, but we don't. I know the budget committee gets a presentation on the capital improvement plan. I don't want as in-depth of a presentation as I've seen at the budget committee. But I think it would be great if the school board got that as well. I don't know where we would want to fit that in. We have January, we have public hearings, we have all that. But I do think it's an important thing that we don't actually get to really dig into and it would be good for us to at least see it. So, um, but I don't know when.
Yeah, no, I, I agree a lot. And I think that's part of like your, um, when we talk about goals and our budget planning, I think that's the appropriate time. So, you see where we are.
Right.
And then identify, is this a goal and are we moving forward with it this year or are we gonna push it?
Right. And I think having the facilities committee give us regular updates is helpful and it's giving us more insight into that. But I just think I'd like to see the plan. And I know I've gone to the budget committee to see it, but I'd like it to come here as, at some point as well. Okay, great. Any other questions on the budget?
The other thing I was gonna ask is, are you going to go through the, the form exercise of, of doing a round four at this point? Or you're just gonna?
Oh, I asked that already.
I know, but I didn't hear what the answer was.
Oh, I, I would like to leave it at round three and call it done. But if I'm asked to make further cuts, then I'll move to round four.
Where will that ask come from?
This group here and/or the budget committee.
Okay. And if you, what's the, what's the deadline for getting into a round four?
Soon.
When is that to be completed, I guess?
Well, probably by January because we have our public hearing in February. So, we'd like to.
Right. I think cost items have to be identified by the budget.
What I want to, what I want to find out is at next week's meeting, if what I'm hearing is that it would have to be done and then reviewed in January by this group, we've got to come out of tomorrow, uh, next week's meeting with either, okay, we're not asking anymore or we're asking for changes.
So, the question to this board is, do you feel like Gina needs to go to a round four and continue to make cuts? I mean, I'm not gonna make a vote, take a vote. Just like, are there comments on that?
I haven't, uh, get into it deep enough.
Yeah, okay.
To answer that question.
It's hard to say. I mean, because, you know, we're given guidance and we met it.
Yeah.
So, we were given a target and we made cuts where we could make cuts. And we either met or exceeded or under exceeded.
Yeah. Under exceeded, yeah.
So, uh, you know, to go further, I'm not against it, but I'd like to understand the rationale.
It's not our budget, this thing. So, so even with what Gina has presented, if the budget committee thinks guidance is the right number.
Yeah. And they've been known to move the target.
I guess that's what I'm concerned with. But I mean, we're below guidance. It's 2%. I think it's fairly, um, you know, when they add things back in, it's, it's, um, 2%. I think it's, um, one of our more conservative budgets that we've had in the last few years. I feel good about it, but, um, I will. I feel good about it, but I will of course do whatever I'm asked, so.
It's just more resource and time to go to a fourth round, so.
If it's not necessary.
I want to know, what are the drivers for round four? And is there ROI to put all this time and extra effort to maybe get a little bit more of return, so.
But it could go the other way, Rob, they could say, look, we think this is an appropriate budget. What haven't you funded that you're putting off that if we go to guidance, where would that money be used?
Right, and that's a discussion worth having as well, because there's.
So I think that's, that's something that you might want to let, have that conversation with the Budget Committee Chair to say, hey, if you stand, if the Budget Committee stands tight with their guidance and this is the budget number they want to present, here's what it'll get you.
Okay.
Yep, and, you know, as board members, can always attend the Budget Committee meeting and give public input or, you know, listen and watch, so, but we'll be paying attention, I think that's the best thing. Okay, so that's the budget, next on the agenda, is there any other questions? Is the Co-op Support Staff Negotiations Representatives? So Beth and Kate were on, this is my item, I think, there's nothing in the agenda packet. We need to appoint a negotiations team because we have been asked to, we have to follow through on a, on language that says that we have to sidebar related to health, healthcare costs because healthcare costs went up more than what our threshold was. So I, Rob and Amy both volunteered to help because Krista is no longer serving on the board. So I talked to Amy and she's happy to step aside. Kate and Beth and Rob would be my appointments, both Kate and Beth said that they can continue to serve. Kate has a limit in terms of the fact that she can't be available two days a week, but Monday and Thursday. So if there's no opposition to that, I'd like to appoint Kate, Rob and Beth to the negotiation team because Kate and Beth have the history, and Lauren, you'll be there, right? I don't believe that Tom Clausen attends all of those meetings, so he can if, if necessary, if you feel the need to.
If there's a legal question.
If there's a question, sure.
In the past, I don't think he's attended any of the.
He's Support Staff, no.
He's never really done. But he's available, I mean, we can reach out to him if there's a problem. So I guess I need a motion to, is this something?
There's a deliberative vote.
Oh, there's a deliberative item?
I'm just sort of curious.
Okay.
Is the.
Okay, I'll do that.
The negotiation will only be isolated to that one topic.
Correct, yes, it's a sidebar, isn't called a sidebar, is that what it is? Not a sidebar.
Shouldn't be opening up.
I guess.
Depends what the outcome is.
Okay, so that's that, and then Facilities Committee update, so we're gonna, we have a deliberative item on that underneath deliberation, so we'll do it then. Facilities Committee update?
All I have is that we were informed that the middle school boiler change, or changeover is complete now. That we now have three units that load chair, so not, it's much like the way the high school is set up. They can escalate on a rotating basis, which gives redundancy as well as greater efficiency. There were photos circulated, I think I may actually, if I have them, but the area was cleaned up really well. That half of the order of solar panels was, or is scheduled to be delivered on 12/16. And they will be some, put into storage somehow, somewhere, and that.
On property.
Our belief is that the balances will also be brought onsite in time to fall within the period to qualify. But even if they didn't have order, does meet the monetary limit for it. And there was a suggestion from one of the, one of the members for consideration. They suggested a warrant article to authorize, essentially to pre-authorize the use of the unassigned fund balance for a, any or, not any, but for a specific future planned capital improvements, basically saying that have a warrant article that said, if money exists at the end of the year, this will get, it will be used. It almost supersedes the board discretion to move it. There were mixed thoughts on it, but it's something that they are asking to be considered so that by getting a pre-authorization, even though it's a limiting factor on how you can use the money, it is, if it's done in the same context as all the other warrant articles, it might give the public greater comfort in knowing what the money will be spent on if they approve the entire budget.
Yeah, I ran into one of your Facility Committee members, you mentioned that to me. So my only question is, I think this would have to be sort of an, we need to discuss that further because like, we have to have an understanding of what that exactly, how it will be written, whether it's legal, all of that stuff. So we can put it on the agenda for next month and talk about it, can we do that, as like a potential warrant article? And maybe have a little bit of work done to see what, how you would write, something like that, if it's legal, that kind of thing. But I don't want to spend too much time tonight because we have to have a better understanding of it.
Just before you said, so the two questions that immediately pop, can it be done?
Right.
And number two, should it be done?
So I think, I think we'll ask the team to go back and see if it can be done or, or give us a report back on that. We'll maybe put it on the agenda for next month.
Yeah, and the thinking was that although it's the board's decision, it's the board's money at the end of the year and we can just decide to spend it.
Right.
And in previous years, we've done that.
Right.
But by having this warrant article, it gives the community a voice.
Right.
In that.
Yeah, no.
And the warrant article could even be structured that says, will you agree to allow up to certain amount to be spent on, maybe we have a very specific table of things?
Like from the capital improvement, like, yeah.
And so.
Yeah.
It, it gives them the voice and says, no, we prefer you don't and give the money back.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I get it, I think that, I think it's something we should talk about, but I just don't want to get too, I don't want to go too in the weeds on it tonight for various reasons. I do also, the same member of that Facility Committee who I ran into, did mention that the photos were impressive and, you know, we should give our Superintendent maybe an opportunity at our meeting to, you know, thank the community for the, for all of it and give an update on the state of, a state of the schools, if you will.
That was my plan.
Yeah, based on what he gave us last year.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, Budget Committee, Tom, that's you too.
Yep.
It's a Tom Solon show today.
So Gina already talked about the guidance, the guidance number, which was set at a five percent, five point six percent increase of the sum that is under review for guidance. So they take out contractual agreements, they take out certain things, but of what was left, they were looking at a five point six percent increase that was based on the CPI kind of numbers, which worked out to be, was it three point, I don't know, we had the number, it was three point something percent. So that's, that's where it came in. There were a lot of questions about enrollment and future needs for space in the Co-op. And the message that was given was that there are no current indications that there are plans for building changes. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
That is accurate.
So from a space standpoint?
That being said, when designing the HVAC system upgrades this summer and next, they're designed with the possibility of building up in mind so that we don't inadvertently create additional problems if we need to build up.
There was a lot of interest in the whole forecast and the predictions and there was a need for a little bit of a discussion about how unlike the elementary schools where if you take a chunk of students out, you can potentially now have a classroom. In the Co-op where students move around, the likelihood of twenty-five student reduction mean, okay, we need one fewer classroom, one less teacher, it just doesn't work that way.
Right.
What you end up happening, because we see it when we talk about class sizes, if you don't run that class, it doesn't mean you don't need the teacher somewhere, it just means that teacher doesn't have to work that period.
Right. Yeah, it's a little more complicated at the, at the Co-op level, yeah.
That's it.
Great, thank you. And then number six is an item on the agenda that you asked for regarding the fact that the Budget Committee would like to, or some members of the Budget Committee have interest in being involved in our negotiation process. Not involved, I shouldn't say involved, that's the wrong word. It's more, maybe becoming more aware of how it works and.
What they requested was an opportunity to meet in a non-negotiation year to, number one, understand how negotiation strategies are developed and to provide their viewpoint potentially on things that they might ask to be considered. I think that they will or would be pleasantly surprised to find out that those factors are considered. There's not this huge gap between what those members are seeking. But the fact that they don't know that and don't understand it is part of what creates a little bit of a disconnect and a communication error. So I, at the direction of the board, I reached out to our attorney to ask about the legality of such a meeting and was told that it definitely should take place in a, in a non-public environment.
Non-meeting environment, right, technically not non-public, right?
Well, I don't, I don't know if it's a non-meeting or non-public, said it probably should not involve a quorum. You need, you want to be really careful and not in any way provide any suggestion that the Budget Committee people are or can be a portion of the negotiating team.
Yeah.
But he saw nothing wrong with it and offered, if we chose to move forward and would value his inclusion in the process, he would be willing to support us in such an effort. So the question here doesn't have to be answered tonight. The question here is, are we willing to have some meeting or meetings of that type with a Budget Committee, with a, one or more Budget Committee members?
I'm kind of opposed to having not the whole board, I mean, if you only had, I know you can't have a quorum, but everybody's interpretation is different.
So he meant not a quorum of either, of either body or not a quorum of the Budget Committee?
Well, definitely not of the Budget Committee. You could have it, it would, it would change the formality of it. It's, I think you could do whatever you wanted to. His recommendation was not based on legality, his was on simplicity. That was the basis of it. But if the entire board wanted, wanted to participate, there's nothing, basically, there's nothing that prevents it.
As long as it's in a non-public setting, because we can't discuss negotiation strategy in public.
Well, we can't really, we can't, we can't have negotiation strategy in that meeting, period.
Right, right, right.
It, it, the issue would be, it would, it would be, there's a high probability that it would focus on items that we have, we are just forced to talk about in non-public because it's talking about things like services that we provide and how those factor in and it might involve specific positions in staffing that would be personally identifiable.
So I have a real struggle with this, real struggle with this. And I, my gut is to say that I'm not super interested in that. I had a thought, I can't think of it, so I'm gonna let somebody else speak.
All I would say is, I don't, I don't think the question, I suggest that we don't frame the question as, is it something we want? The question is, is it something we are willing to do because they want it?
So what I, but I do remember what I was gonna say. I was with you when you presented the contract to the Budget Committee and your presentation was extremely thorough. It went through significant, you know, you were really clear on the whys, the history, everything within the legality, not, you know, not sharing things that you couldn't, you did not share things you couldn't share. You did that in public, it was an incredibly thoughtful and well-presented thing. And so I guess I feel like we do our due diligence in that way presenting it. It's after the fact, I understand that, but it's kind of important that it is after the fact because it's our role to do that negotiation. So that's where I'm coming from on this, but I'll listen to everybody, I wouldn't oppose it, but I wouldn't be a fan of it.
The tact, or the reason that brought the question was a desire for them to make suggestions to us, not to understand, but what I said to them was, you can make suggestions, but you should know, it would be more helpful if you understood what's already being done.
Right.
Because that might change what you suggest.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would put, put a little requirement on that. That the people who are interested in engaging in a strategic discussion, that they read the current contract and are familiar with it and know what the contract elements are in place. And then, then maybe we can talk further about what is on, you know, maybe some priorities or something. I do know that when I was Chair of Hollis and we were going, prior to going into negotiation, I, at times, because I was also the rep to the Budget Committee, so I was playing a dual role. And I opened the floor with them and I said, what are your top two or three items that would be a priority to you? And I always left that open and I said, we'll take that feedback and perhaps we'll take that feedback and build it into a strategy. I'm not guaranteeing it, but what are the things on your mind? Sometimes I didn't get any feedback at all. Other times it was just the, the things you would expect, lower benefits costs, you know, don't go over a certain amount of, you know, salaries. It was always the high-level stuff that you'd kind of expect from a Budget Committee. But the Co-op, there's a lot more moving parts, I would believe.
They've always given us those kind of things.
It wasn't necessarily about cutting.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I said they, we've always done that for all the negotiations that I can think of. We've always, the Budget Committee's always given us some of their top priority. But my thought is, is we could have this discussion, you know, next month and our strategy may be completely different by the time we get to, and our strategy may change based on what the union brings to us.
Absolutely.
So I think, I, I don't know how we can make them comfortable about a strategy. My concern would be, we give them what we think is going to be a strategy and then they turn around and say we didn't do what they, we said that we were gonna do.
Yeah, I, I'm not, yeah.
Well, I'm also not crazy about hearing input around the operations. Because you have to be pretty close to the school district and its operations to know what's going on. And somebody who's that, or an entity is that removed, I'm less inclined to want input there.
I'm with you, I'm with Rob.
Do you want to make a decision tonight about your position and I will communicate it on Thursday? Or do you want to wait and consider it further?
Well, I mean, I think Cindy, Rob and I are all in the same place, I don't know where Kate is.
Well, I, I, I want to say I support it, but I have limited support for it. I would like to build some structure around what the conversation would be.
You can go back to them with the idea that we're hesitant, we want to have a better understanding of what they want and then you can come back with it.
I do have some insight, but again, because of, it was specific enough, not what they said, but what it actually means, they could say it in public. not what they said, but what it actually means. They could say it in public without knowing what it is that they were saying, because of the ramifications of what they're saying, that I could share in non-public, but I don't feel comfortable sharing it.
Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to like, just, you can go back, say that we're hesitant. I think the energy behind it might, because I happen to run into that person, I'm not sure the same energies to do it is there.
Okay.
Okay, so.
If we could get a better understanding of the structure of what that conversation would look like, because I want to have some, don't go there.
And I do think, we, I think it's good practice for us when we start negotiations for our Budget Committee rep to go in, in, you know, the month before or two months before and ask the Budget Committee for their priorities and have a few things. I think that's great, that's why we do that. But, but, you know, if, I want to know what more they want. Like, what more do they want?
Okay, I, yeah, I can tell you.
Okay, and then in terms of the Spec Committee moving on, because we're at seven fifty, and I want to start deliberations at seven fifty. I just wanted to let you know that Carol, who is the Vice Chair of the SAU Governing Board, has sent an email to me and to the Chairs of the other two boards with instructions to complete the, the long-form version of the Superintendent Evaluation. So that will be sent to you. I just have to like click on the instructions and figure out how I have to do it. So I will be sending it to you tomorrow. I got it today and didn't have a chance to like do that, but I'll be sending it out hopefully tomorrow before the SAU Governing Board meeting. And that's all I wanted to say on that tonight, was just that I, we've started, that she started that.
Do you know what the, the current process or the upcoming process will be to collect administrative input? Has that been well enough defined? Because I know that there was some question about it at the last discussion.
I think we should talk about that tomorrow night, because I don't have that in here, and I think that's a, that's a topic for tomorrow night, how we're gonna go about that. And I think that's part of the SAU policy.
No, you answered my question. I didn't know if it was specified.
She did not, she just said, please note that building administrator interviews must occur before the February SAU Governing Board meeting. And suggest that questions and topics are found here. So she does have that.
That'll help to frame the discussion.
Right, okay. All right, so moving on to deliberations at seven fifty-two. Two minutes behind time. And I, you know what, I just wanted to let the principals know, normally I do kind of say skedaddle, but there's a policy on here that at the end is, is one that I really feel like you need to be here for. I'm sorry, I apologize, because it's late. So first, it's the Program of Studies, and you should have received that in an email. It's also been updated on this, if you refresh this, but I'm just gonna look at my emails. If you have, if you need to look at the actual document before we make a motion to approve it, so. And I'm, I, I, normally in this situation, we would postpone for another month because we didn't have it in the packet. But, and it wasn't on the agenda, but we do need to get this done, and it was on our agenda last month, so.
So the updates were, the, the things that were identified that needed updates, and also there was a slight additional update that was based on policy and the definition of a full-time student.
It's at the very top of page twenty, if you're looking at it. Just had to pick off, it said students must be carrying a minimum of six classes because of the policy it's changed to consider to full-time students to qualify for honorable.
Which isn't a substantial change, because in our JF policy, it says a full-time student has to carry six classes. So it's just to make the language more consistent. It's not changing anything substantially.
Page twenty, you said?
The very top of page twenty.
Is it in red? Okay, well, I, I'm looking on my phone. Okay, great. So it's basically just a little thing to change, all right. Are there any other questions on this? This was a significant overhaul due to the Ed three oh six. Ooh, look at me! So, but it, it truly, the impact on the Program of Studies changes impact our incoming freshmen more than anyone else. So that's the big change, and we've had, we've been able to update everything. So if there's-
I'm just not seeing it at the top of page twenty.
It's just one little sentence.
Is it in red or black?
Red.
Red.
Under honor roll?
No, the honor roll piece is actually on page twenty-one.
Well, sometimes it depends.
Twenty of the documents. I don't know what page it is on that.
It's on twenty-one of the one that Gina just sent us.
Twenty-one, what she sent out.
Yeah, she just, what she just sent out.
Okay.
If it's honor roll, you'll-
All right, so at this time, do you have a question, Tom? Because I'd like to move forward. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Program of Studies as in the, we've attached it to the agenda now, right?
Some of.
Moved by Rob. I need a second. Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Six, oh, five zero, because Amy left, so we're still at five. Five zero. Thank you guys for doing that.
That's a big body of work.
Yeah, that's great.
Yolanda Flamino, amazing work on this, so kudos goes to her.
Okay, the next is, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna have the motion. I feel like there might be some discussion on this, but we can put a motion on the table to approve the request from the Social Studies Department for a trip for history students to Germany and the Alps during the April twenty-twenty-seven school vacation. I need a motion? Moved by Kate, second by Rob. Okay, is there a discussion?
It's a great time.
I'm into it as long as I can go.
Me too.
I can be the tour guide.
So we, we're definitely working on some poli-, we have a policy in place now.
Yeah.
Teachers wanted let me, have me let you know. They did hold a tentative informational meeting, because they wanted to get the word out. They do have over twenty students who are tentatively signed up to, to participate, so the student interest is there and growing. So they just wanted to share that with you guys as well.
Okay.
I, the first page or whatever, you know, the form said that the curriculum or curricular components of it were attached, and the copy that was in my packet was, or did I, I thought they were not attached, so I don't know what was, what was the purpose of it.
Okay, we did receive one email from a parent with concerns that we're offering activities such as this that are expensive, expensive. And that they feel like in today's day and age with the economy the way it is, that it's not really appropriate to, for us to offer that. So, just for your consideration. They were not here to give public input, but. Okay.
I'm not, I'm not able to open the attachments because of-
Only that one, I, mine was the same.
No, I also couldn't open the, the one that was the-
I can't open this one either.
No, it wants you to log into the document again.
The summary, I couldn't open the summary for policy.
Right. So, do you need, do you have a question on it, or?
Well, I'd like to know what the-
I went into last month's agenda and was able to open it there.
Did it have the curriculum element in it?
Uh, it had the-
The rationale and curriculum connections that's, I believe, attached to the last one. It's a separate form that they attached to it. It, it just says the, the stops on the tour are directly tied to subjects covered in most of our social studies curriculum.
Yeah, is it, did, has there been a change since last month?
No.
To it, okay. So it's the same as last month, so you might be able to get it from- You might be able to get it going to the SAU agenda from last month?
That's what I did.
Do you need to see it, Tom?
No.
Are you good? Could you vote? Can you vote on it? Okay, so I'm gonna call the vote then. All those in favor of the trip to Germany? All those opposed? Four one, motion carries. Okay, moving forward. We have the policy memo. Oh no. I need to have, make a motion to appoint Rob Mann, Kate Stoll, and Beth Williams as support staff negotiators for this very limited negotiation. Moved by Cindy. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Kate. So any discussion on that?
Just, you know, I don't vote for myself, so I will be abstaining.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you for telling me, though.
Yeah, because I don't want people to like that.
Well, like, what, like, are we just a point?
But if we all said that, then no-
You can vote for yourself, Kate, it's okay.
I'm like, wait, I don't want to vote for now, I feel weird.
It's okay, you'll still get it, because it's three two, okay.
You're voting for Rob.
Right, you're voting for Rob, Rob's voting for you.
Okay, all those in favor of the support staff negotiators appoint.
It's coming, it's same thing happened to Cindy just now.
Okay, all those in favor. Four. All those opposed, abstentions, one. So four zero one, motion carries. It's Rob, Kate, and Beth, thank you. Who will reach, what's the next step for them? Because Krista was kind of lead on this and-
Sure, Lauren will reach out to the negotiating team.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you. And move on from there. Great, thank you so much. All right, so next is the policy memo. Okay, so we did catch a minor mistake on the policy memo. That was Amy caught it. And that is that, I'd like to make the change before we put it on the floor, so I believe that, oh, maybe you guys fixed it. The, the minor changes, IKF, the minor changes, okay, so, great. All right, so I'd like to have a motion to approve the recommendations identified in the policy memo as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Cindy, second by Rob. Just for your, as a discussion point, you'll notice that there's another policy under deliberative item number five now. As a Policy Committee, we're trying to take the ones off of the memo that we feel will garner more conversation and discussion, and keep the things on the memo that are, have, maybe have already been dug into, or are more, I don't want to use this word, because I don't want to offend anybody, but a little bit more boilerplate, like we, we're at that point where they're, they need to be approved.
I just want to ask, confirm, IMBA, we're not looking to approve it. I am asking for something, a correction on it.
Okay.
Does approving the memo prevent any discussion?
No. What do you mean? We're gonna, we, we'll go through the, we'll go through these in the end.
No, I just don't know whether, how, how you want to proceed on it.
I think he's just saying because the memo says that it's no changes, reading with no changes, but this, he can still change it, because it's a second.
It's a second read, you can make changes. So what we do is we go through them.
This one's not, not, I, I want to make sure I'm reading correctly, that it's not second and adopt, and it's not-
It is not second and adopt.
And, and approval, do you, are you gonna have discussion before voting on the memo?
Yes, we're gonna discuss it now. We're gonna go through the memo. As we've been going through every month, we just go through them quickly, and then we give you an-
Remember what the sequence of events is.
Right, and then we give you an opportunity to give us feedback on any that we're not adopting. So if we're adopting it, we will take feedback, but then we'll have to not adopt it, so.
And JICN is one of the standalone ones.
And JICN is standalone because it's a new policy. So let's just focus on the five or six that are here. EBCH was the Chemical Hygiene Safety Plan. That came to us, we're at third read for that one. What were the minor changes? I don't have Amy.
There was a number, I know, she left.
I know, Amy!
We added a number eleven on page, on the second page. And it should have been there, it had gotten mistaken off the, the meeting before. So number eleven just reads a requirement for an annual chemical hygiene plan audit and report.
Yeah, so we had reference to that, but we didn't actually have number eleven, so we had to put number eleven back in, and that does happen, right?
That was the only change.
Yeah, it does happen. Are there any questions on that?
And we're hoping to do a third and adopt.
Right, so we're hoping that'll be a third and adopt. For third read and adopt with no changes was KI Visitors to Schools. So there were no changes, there were no, what we do is we review the minutes from the month before. We also review it again and make sure that there's nothing that anybody wants changed, and we also look at it carefully to see if there are any changes. There were no changes, so we feel like this one's clean and should go to adopt. We have the same thing for the IKF High School Graduation. That was, that was presented, this would be our second read of that. The minor changes were-
Moving, it was in the table. We needed to move Social Studies from three to four, and then reduce the Free Choice Electives from three to two point five.
And we caught that last month in the presentation, and we made that change in the policy. So that table's attached to the High School Graduation, and that was the only change that we made. And then, so if we pass this memo, that will also be adopted, and we're asking that get adopted with like waiving the third in, in essence, because these are high school graduation requirements, and we want them on the books as soon as possible. And then for second read with minor changes, we have IMAH. So what were those changes? And this is second read, this, these, the next three will go to a third read. So if you have, this is your opportunity to give us more feedback if you want us to make more changes.
The changes here were that we remove, this was, we had a lot of conversation at the last meeting and in policy around the board recommending things, and so we just struck, struck the word "the board" and started with it is recom, it is recommended that students, and same thing in the third paragraph. We took out the board and put in the Superintendent, and our Wellness Committee recommends the following practices. And then the last paragraph was just relocated up into the second paragraph.
So we took some of your feedback, actually from you, Tom, and, and, and those of us even in the Policy Committee, were really struggling with this idea that the board is, we're not responsible for telling what the students what to do. So we changed it to do that, and we put it more underneath the Superintendent and the Wellness Committee. And we moved the Wellness Committee language forward, so that it would be very clear that it's sort of under the supervision of the Wellness Committee.
I'm just curious, what, what is the current composition of the Wellness Committee?
Well, Kate is on it.
They just met this week.
Yeah, so Emmy White is on it, and it's-
I don't know the rest of the makeup she's in.
You have a board member from each board, and you have a representative from each school.
So it's a, it's an SAU level?
Correct.
And are there, are there any prerequisite qualifications of the individuals in terms of being able to, how do they get the guidance of what constitutes well, wellness?
So they get direction from the committee for pretty much the initiatives that are pushed down onto us in terms of what we're supposed to support and recommend, and-
I mean, how does the, the committee?
Oh, legal requirements. Yeah, they come from the state. Are there, are there any nurses on it? Uh, I actually don't know which- The Food Service Director's on it, so.
I'm just wondering if, if, yeah, it's like in Concord where we have people who have no, nothing, know nothing about education, setting guidance for education. I hate to see us do the same thing with wellness.
So just so we can get Emmy to know, Kate is on this committee, but hasn't been getting the notices, so she's a member of the committee. But also, I believe that it is now meeting on Thursdays, which is a problem, so we'd like to have you guys reach out to Kate and chat with her on that.
Okay.
All right, so there you go, Tom. That's that one. And then, sorry, I've gotta switch back to the memo. JLCK, Special Physical Health Needs of Students. What kinds of changes were those? Because I wouldn't say they were all minor changes.
This, we rewrote the, the first sentence instead of saying, "The board is committed to helping to ensure that all students within the district are supported," which was just a poorly worded sentence. And we changed it to "The board is committed to supporting all students within the, the district in their physical and emotional well-being." And we changed, due to the conversation at the meeting last month, essential to beneficial.
And we also changed the word "employ to provide," because some of the support that we provide is, is in the form of contracted employees. So they're not actually employees. They're contracted. Any questions on that one? All right, we're gonna keep moving forward then, and then, oh gosh, bouncing, bouncing. Yeah, so the next one is IK. Yeah, and that was for minor changes, and what was that? Ick, yeah. We had to add the table to this one.
Oh, that's, yeah, we added the table at the end.
It references the table, but the table wasn't in it, so we, we added the table, the same table that you're seeing in, in the other, in the credits.
No, it's not the same table, because this relates to state required.
Yes, this is, it shows that the difference between the state and-
The twenty credits required in this one.
Right, right.
In the narrative.
Chart three oh six dash one, which is referred to, is the old minimum requirements up through the graduating class of twenty-twenty-nine. Three oh six dash two are the new twenty minute, twenty credit minimum requirements that start with the graduating class of twenty-thirty.
But don't we require twenty-three for our HB?
Right, but this is the state requirement.
Right, so that, that was what I think is not the same chart as what's in this.
Right, I made a mistake when I said that, right. Right, I made a mistake when I set that, right.
We do have the minimum standards in our program of studies, we also have our twenty-three credit.
Right.
But, and the thing that, that she was referencing, she was talking about the fact that we have the new chart totals up to twenty-three, but we moved to half credit on the electives. This is a different chart.
Correct. Right, we have this chart also in the other policy, but we don't, you're right, it's not the same chart. But we, we added the tables from three oh six one and three oh six two, that was the only change.
It's, the quality of the tables seem pretty poor.
I thought it was my eyes.
It looks like they're out of focus.
It was a cut and paste of her.
Yeah, we'll fix that.
So we will fix that.
Improve that.
This is, yeah, this is second read, so we can fix that, okay. And then I M B A, remote learning is also, was that also second read for, I don't have the policy memo from you anymore.
Second read, no change.
Second read, no changes, okay, so um, Tom, did you have some feedback on this that we can take back to the committee?
Uh, yeah, section A. Uh, first sentence, second line, I think the, well, actually on here it's a little bit, the, the second, oh, maybe it's been corrected.
Should it be as a means?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Yeah, I see, we should.
That uh, one opportunity should be removed.
Yes, agreed.
Okay.
A little too many opportunities in that sense.
Okay. Okay.
That's it.
Okay, so a little grammar change, so again, this was for um. Alright, so that was for.
Second read.
Second read, but not adopt, so we've gone through all that, you've given the feedback, I'd like to, to take a vote on the policy memo as it exists.
Can I have one quick?
Sure.
Without this messing up the policy memo? On um I K F, the formatting of just of this, well, and then it kind of runs into the, is there a way to fix that without messing up the memo?
No, you don't have to mess up the policy memo, you can just give the, so what you're saying is that we're going to adopt this tonight? We will fix the formatting, that is not a subset, we'll fix the formatting, that's not a problem. When you look at it online, I don't know if, it's not, I K.
I F K, okay, I K F rather, the right side of the table, it just, whatever happened just with this right column. It may not print that way, but.
Somebody's car getting broken into?
Not around here. Which one is it?
What kind of car? What kind of car is it?
The two, blink is looking.
I don't have, I don't see that. That's on the chart. So it's just, I can't pull it up, I'm sorry, um. It's I K F, so when you scroll into it, when you get down here.
Under C.
So no, she, I don't have it, the same problem that you have, I mean, it still looks a little strange, so it might just, it might just be the computer. But that's a formatting issue and that's not worth not.
It's the width of, the, the.
Yeah.
Mine's tables are not the same width.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just a formatting.
Then you bring it out.
Put your head, what's the problem?
So this is what it looks like, this is what it'll look like in the manual. So, okay, okay, Tom, you ready? I need a vote on the memo, Tom, so hold on, come on.
And you need to pass the candy.
Oh, and pass the candy, okay, are you ready to vote on the memo?
Yes.
All those in favor of the policy memo? That's five zero, great. Thank you, made a motion carries. Next thing is the last policy is the um, to see what action the board will take regarding J I C N prohibition of creation, distribution or viewing of digital deception in other media. So this one we thought might garner some more um feedback, so I'd like to make a motion to put on the, you know, make a motion and then we can talk about it, so I need a motion to accept for first read policy J I C N pro- prohibition of create, or of creation, distribution or viewing of digital deception. Moved by Rob, I need a second? Second by Kate, thank you. Okay, so I'm not going to talk about this, who's going to introduce this one or talk about it or? I'll start, to, I'll start and then Doc can jump in, so um, this is not a required policy yet. We anticipate that there will be a law on this coming through in January, is that what you're thinking? But we wanted to get a little ahead of this and um we've borrowed this from another school district who's working on passing the same type of thing, but we did do some um modification of it to make it more ours in terms of um changing the title so that it wasn't like prohibition of deep fake materials, but instead, you know, really defined what that is. And uh, anything else that we did?
I would just say, it's not a policy that we currently have, but in lieu of, as a result of some um things that have been happening, not just in our district, but regionally, um, we thought that it was um prudent to start the conversation, to bring this forward and get a policy on our books. And so we did do a first look through at policy, did some small changes in bringing this forward to get input and bring back to policy, this will definitely be a three read.
Right, so if there's any feedback so far, if you've got a chance to take a look at it?
Yep.
Uh huh, well, I know, and you know, Tom, we give you lots of compliments and sometimes we complain a little bit um at the policy meetings because you really do do a good job with this, so we really appreciate it. But sometimes we say, oh, what did you say to this?
I did a simple one first, there's a lot of references to page, page X of five, and it's not a five-page document, so you may want to trim that out. It's uh in the header apparently because it prints on, on the pages, but it's also at the bottom of the document. Apparently the one you picked it from was a five-page. See on the lower right corner it says one of five.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right.
So it's in the header and the footer, that's the simple stuff. Um, under definitions, the first one, deep fake, I would ask you to think about deleting the word use artificial intelligence, A I to. So that it says digitally manipulated media that create a fabricated representation because there are many ways of, of creating it.
Yep.
And I wouldn't want someone to say, I didn't use A I, I drew this myself.
Right, very good point.
Okay, um, and then under potential harm, a little further down, uh, causing financial or reputational harm, I suggest consideration of adding financial, emotional or reputation, reputational harm. That's it.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Alright, all those in favor of first read? Five zero, motion carries. Well, that ends our meeting, except do we have a um non-public?
We do not.
We do not, okay, so I need a.
Do you want to have one where I can just share some information about that other topic?
Um, let's do the report out from the process observer, we'll go into non-public and we'll adjourn from there. Alright. We're literally just, but we're good, we're going to go into non-public for like five minutes, so, alright. Five minutes, Tom.
From a timing standpoint, we did well, we, we have, didn't have to utilize the full amount for uh public input, although we did have some good public input. And I think that the input that we received, um, we need to find a way to format a direct response to it.
I agree.
At a future meeting.
Great.
But I, I thought the discussion was good and fruitful and certainly I'm encouraged by the fact that the people who came suggested they're willing to engage in a dialogue with the board, which, which is helpful. The budget information went through surprisingly quickly despite the fact that there was a lot of information being presented, and applaud you on that. And uh, the deliberations all went well, good group, I think a lot got done, and we thank you all.
Thank you, alrighty, so I need a motion to, that the board by roll call go into non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one dash A, calling three, section two, um.
I think that's the correct one because it is compensation or, it would be A and C.
A and C, dismissal promotion or compensation made in public employment and to discuss a matter which if discussed in public would likely affect a person other than a member of the body or agency itself. Second by Rob, this is roll call, but, thank you gentlemen, you are welcome to leave, um, roll call.
Amy aye.
Cindy aye.
Holly aye.
Kate aye.
Rob aye.
Okay, so we are going into non-public at. Yeah, so Don, Amy just walked back in at eight nineteen, we're going into non-public at eight twenty, we will adjourn from this meeting, from there, from non-public. Thank you all, have some candy.
Started and then it stalled right back out and then next is.